There's council. I see councillor Whitney. Councillor Coker, Kenyon, Sledoff. Is councillor Bjornson on?
Yep, there she's connecting.
Okay. And councillor Hooker, I don't see her. Oh, is she at the council chamber today?
Yes, she is.
Okay, great. Councillor Bjornson, are you on yet?
Yes, I'm here.
Awesome. All right, we'll call this meeting to order July 21st at 7:01 PM. First order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic which is stable, one nation under God.
Thank you, James. And Jackie, will you call? Do roll call?
Councillor Coker?
Here.
Councillor Bjornson?
Here.
Councillor Whitney?
Here.
Councillor Hooker?
Here.
Mayor Hollitt?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Councillor Sledoff?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? I have a couple additions. 9.5, I would like to add artwork for the water tower. And 9.6, I would like to add, and these are both for discussion, discussion of a map in partnership with the chambers and book.
You froze up, Mayor.
Did I?
Yes, all we got was artwork for the water tower.
Okay, so 9.5 was discussion for artwork for water tower and 9.6 was discussion for working with the chambers on a map. And possible book. Any other additions? All right, we'll go into public comment. And I have a couple of public comments that were submitted by email. So I'm going to go ahead and read them first. And then after those are done, we'll go and take public comment that's live. All right, first one is from Erin Dumont. And her address is 48237 Y Drive. Hello, my name is Erin Dumont. I have lived here for a little over seven years. I moved to this location because of the peaceful secluded nature of this property. My peace was ruined July 7th, 2021, when my neighbor, my neighbor's mentally unstable, drug addicted son, I'll leave the name out, decided it was a great day to make methamphetamine in his garage, which caused it to blow up, setting my front yard on fire. I was not at home at this time. I was reading the events take fold on the Oak Ridge chat forum while sitting in a dentist waiting room with my children as my dog was home hearing and seeing the fire. I don't even know how many messages and texts I got asking if I was okay. A few days later, after the fire, I was told by a close by friend that this person was not supposed to be back at the residence and to let police know if I see him go up our shared driveway. About a week after the fire, I seen him walking up the driveway. So proceeded to let the police know, to which I was told, screw you and your safety because it's his home and they can't do anything about him being there. I was let down by our police department because it is his right more than, more important than the safety of my children. For the past year, I've lived here in fear and stress, wondering what, when he is going to do and do it again. When, when am I and my children and pets going to be put in danger again? What, will I be home? Will my kids be home? Will my dog be home? I see the drug addicted foot traffic that frequents at this now burned down home. I fear that when I am sleeping, my car will get broken into. I fear that when I am away from my home, these people will decide to break into my home. It happened again, June 29th, 2022. I was not home. I was just getting off work. My kids and pets were home. This time it was the house. Our houses sits maybe 20 yards apart. 20 yards, too dang close. If you have never gotten a call from your 12 year old crying and telling you that the neighbor's house is on fire, they can see flames, you're a very lucky person. It's almost the worst feeling to feel helpless against fire. He fled the scene, left the scene of his crime, had no regards to whom may been affected. My home is not the only home in this close proximity. There is a home on the other side which had significant fire damage from the first fire a year ago. Sparks could have well gone down into property below the Houston's property. Three homes that could have been lost or significantly damaged again. I thank with my whole heart the quick response of our fire department who put water on the home to save it. And now I once again have to fear. The family has invited their family to park a fifth wheel on the property but could not get it up the driveway. So it's been parked at the bottom of my driveway, barely allowing me enough room to get up and down the driveway, collecting garbage and clutter around the fifth wheel. Living in the fifth wheel on a public street where they have no proper disposal of their waste, no electricity, going to work at 4:45 AM Tuesday 12th. I had to drive around going into my neighbor's yard to get out of my driveway because they were using their car to have electricity in the fifth wheel. Wednesday 13th, they had to wake up the person who was passed out in what I assumed to be a drugged out stupor in the middle of my driveway, honking my horn to which he waved me, waved to drive around him. I did not drive around him because I did not feel safe to do so. So I waited roughly 10 minutes while he struggled to get up, only after yelling, I would call the police if he did not move. Hindsight, I probably just should, should have called, but I was angry at that point and I had already long day at work. I cannot feel safe with these people so closely allowed to do what they are doing. I cannot start the tree trimming, maintenance and trimming of my bushes along the side of my driveway because they're in the way of me being able to get to the trailer to pick up the debris. I have a pile of blackberry vines. I started to trim away after the fire. I cannot get picked up to take away because I cannot get past the driver, the trailer safely. I need this situation resolved. I need peace of mind and my security back. I don't know what I can do at this point. Give up my home, move my kids away from their home because of this? I don't feel like that's fair. I'm at my wit's end. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor Hollitt, for reading my letter. I'm a concerned citizen who doesn't want to live in fear anymore. Erin Dumont. I want to know, make sure that James gets a chance to respond. He did have the officers take some measures into this, so maybe I'll let you make some statements, James, before I go on to the next one.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. I do have a brief report from one of our officers. It's reported that since that RV has arrived. I should mention the primary occupants of that RV do not include the suspect in fire, although they are friends and that suspect does associate with them and hangs out there. There have been 10 citations issued to the owners of that RV. Four citations for junk accumulation, garbage accumulation, scattering rubbish. Two citations for illegal occupancy of the RV. Two citations for noxious growth. The traffic citation and one citation for dog at large. The Oak Ridge Police Officers checked the location once the shift and we will continue to do so. I will just say that obviously there's some mental health issues involved with suspect in the fire. There, there was a hearing last week. Lane County Public Health tried to determine if more serious measures were needed to address those mental health issues. County decided they were not. And they were released back into the community. Trying to decide, you know, how much I can say and not say, but the issues are being addressed. And it ties into one of our agenda items, which is the League of Oregon Cities legislative ballot. And one of those issues is how to deal with RVs such as this because they are problematic and very costly to remove for the city. But I'll address that issue when we get to that item on the agenda.
Is that the 9.1?
Uh, yes.
The League of Oregon?
Yeah.
Okay, so councillors, if you have any more questions for James regarding the illegal RV, let's go ahead and hold them for maybe after his report on 9.1. I think that might be a good tie in right there because I have a couple more questions about that. Okay, next public comment I have, which is also written. And I will read public comment from Mr. Brian Kutchin, 48300 Hill Street, Oak Ridge, Oregon. I would like to thank the city council for their detailed response to my public, my public comment read on July 7th, 2022. The responses raised additional concerns regarding the process used to correct these errors as well as some transfers that didn't happen. To provide some specifics, number one, I received a copy of the fiscal year 23 budget from City Hall on June 27th, 2022, one day prior to the special session and public hearing on the budget. This was not a draft budget. If changes were still being made to the budget at that time, well after the required posting five days prior, the citizens did not have an accurate budget to consider at the public hearing. Additionally, the city council adopted the budget immediately after the public hearing, making a motion too close to too close to dormant funds. No other changes were made. Any changes made after adoption will require a supplemental budget. Number two, in reviewing the financial report dated June 16th, 2022, no transfer of $405,297 to repay the loan to the water and wastewater ever occurred, even though it was budgeted for. Number three, in reviewing the financial report dated June 16th, 2022, no transfer of $100,000 was made from the general fund to emergency services fund, nor was there a resolution authorizing the transfer. In reviewing the financial report dated June 16th, 2022, no transfer of $100,000 in ARPA funds to the wastewater fund occurred, nor was there a resolution authorizing the transfer. While good faith efforts to correct the errors in this budget may have been made very late in the process, this should have been made done in a very open and public way. I look forward to the supplemental budget, which will address these issues. Any councillors have any response to that or leave it? Councillor Kenyon?
Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Kutchin for writing another letter. Thank you.
The only response I wanted to make was that we did talk several times during the budget process that we would have a supplemental process happening at a later date. And I believe our finance director, Colleen, has mentioned that a couple of times. We have a number of things like the Westford IGA with both the fire and police department will need to be changed through a supplemental budget as well as some grant opportunities coming up. So that will happen. I don't foresee that happening right away, though. That's going to be several months down the road for supplemental process. Councillor Kenyon?
I just wanted to clarify that I think what Mr. Kutchin was asking for is adjustments to the prior year's budget to be done in a supplemental. And we can't do that now that the, that the year is closed. I believe all of the issues have already been addressed, so I don't think that's necessary. But our new supplemental budget will be, so thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, gee, go ahead, James.
Sorry, we're having trouble finding the little hand raise button, but I, I just wanted to mention, since it was an issue raised the last meeting and this one, that the, the final budget is downloaded, uploaded to the website in two places. People can find it under the key documents tab and also under the budget tab.
Thank you. Did you have any more written statements? Just those two? Okay, I think so. All right, any public comment there inside City Hall?
No, not in City Hall.
Thank you.
Hand raised though.
Okay, so first one on Zoom is Trudy Hammond. Go ahead and state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, 76349 Slamitway. I just want to give out a huge shout out to James Covenger for taking time in his down off, off clock, off the clock to come and help me with our roof and gutters. That was a really super sweet thing to do and I really appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trudy. Go ahead. Dan Barclay, name and address and three minutes.
Dan Barclay, 47501 Highway 58. First of all, I appreciate council is actually discussing a supplemental budget that will obviously, obviously become necessary compared to last year when it was also obviously necessary and council request for it was openly and blatantly and flatly refused by a staff members supporting it to council. Second, seven years ago, next month, Oak Ridge lost. That was the last time Oak Ridge had a full time dedicated qualified fire chief. And I want to commend James and Kevin Martin and anybody else involved in actually appointing a bona fide fire chief that can actually respond to fire and medical emergencies. Congratulations, Chief Hollitt. And long overdue, hopefully now after Coburg gets done, we can identify the three bodies that we need in OPD that have since left due to resignation, administrative action or so we, hopefully we can get that down and get issues like the fifth wheel down at Y Street. And I've seen the fifth wheel, it's kind of trashy. Hopefully we can get enough manpower to, to deal with those types of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan Barclay. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience that wishes to speak in public comment? All right, hearing none. We are going to go on to mayor comments and announcements and one comment I have is I wanted to thank Sarah Altimist and the collaborative and her, her, her whole entire team for putting together the wildfire safety awareness night on Thursday of last week. I thought it was a really good response from outside agencies and it was great information brought to the citizens. So thank you for all that work and that was her second annual event. And then hopefully we'll have a third annual. So thank you, guys. I do not have any other announcements. Councillors, do you have any council comments or announcements? All right.
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to see if a new city administrator can clarify to the public out here on the hours of the city hall is open if, if he could. So we can make it public out here to everybody that knows what's going on. So can you speak to that, James?
Yes, right now, we are generally open eight to four, Monday through Thursday and eight to 12 on Fridays, is that right?
No, we're not.
We're closed, closed, sorry, we are closed on Friday. Last, there was last week or the week before that we were open a little bit, but yeah, so now, and there's no lunch breaks. So it's Monday through Thursday, eight to four, but we're open for that entire period. There's not an hour lunch, which I know was frustrating some citizens because if they happen to come in during their lunch break, if it coincided with hours, that, that didn't work out, so.
How do we get away with that in the union?
How do we get away with that? Well, employees are still working at 40 hours. The, the, the union does not control the hours of City Hall.
So we're, we're closed on Fridays, but they're still working in there then? Am I, am I right?
Yes, there, there are employees there. It, it depends on, they have to get their 40 hours in. So some, some employees may not work a full day on Friday. That just means they're working more hours on the other days.
Okay, eight to four, Monday through Thursday and closed on Fridays.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead, councillor Kenyon?
Um, I'm also curious about the lunch breaks. I thought there were requirements by law to allow employees time for lunch.
Yeah, it's, it's staggered, so they're not all taking the lunch at the same time. That's what we do is make sure somebody in the office at all times because that better serves the public.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Go ahead, Colleen.
And I just wanted to put out there that we are putting in a, like a flyer and with everybody's billing this coming month. So that will be in there to update everyone to know all the, the new hours and all that, so that will be going out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, any more questions or comments from councillors?
Um, I just have a small comment and that is that I appreciate them allowing staff to have a little more flexibility with their work schedules. I know things are pretty tight and everybody's doing a lot of work and it just gives them some protected time to do some things without continual interruptions throughout the day. So I think it's, it's a great way to manage their time.
Any other council comments? All right, down to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Motion made from councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Coker for the consent agenda. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. This is from the city council, 9.1, League of Oregon Cities. So we have two copies here. Looks like James sent out the original copy and then his copy with his notations on it. Go ahead, James.
Okay, so as council will recall, we talked about this briefly last meeting. The League of Oregon Cities put out their 2023 legislative priorities ballot where they allow each city to identify their top five priorities. And that will help them develop their, their policies moving forward for lobbying and, and those sort of efforts with state legislature. So council asked me to identify what I thought were high priorities. I didn't want to rank them. And I chose seven that I thought were, in my opinion, high priorities. I, I couldn't whittle it down to five and I also, I don't want to influence council in, you know, in any way. Although one option for council would be to have me make this decision. My personal opinion is that it would be more appropriate for council to do so. Uh, but it's totally up, up to you guys. So, so what I did in the one version is I took a, a green pen and starred what I thought were the top seven issues. Obviously we need to get it down to five at some point. And council is more than welcome to pick five that I did not pick. These, these are just my thoughts. So I'll, I mean, I'll start, I, I can give you a little bit of background as to why I, I picked some of these. You'll, starting on page two. The first one is full funding and alignment for state land use initiatives. I thought this was important to deal with. The general idea is that the Oregon cities will support legislation to streamline and fully fund local implementation of any recently adopted or proposed state land use planning requirements, including administrative rulemaking. I just think that that's generally a good idea. It's probably always on a lot of people's top priorities. Pick the second one as well, local funding to address homelessness. Obviously, I think everyone has noticed that we've seen an uptick in, in homeless residents. It's kind of true throughout the state. Third one I picked is on page three. That is, uh, community resiliency and wildfire planning. That's kind of a no brainer for us living in the middle of the national forest. And on page six, in marijuana taxes right now, we're capped at 3%. That's the highest percentage we can get from local marijuana taxes and would be nice to get a bigger piece of the pie that you might say more similar to alcohol taxes. Next one.
So just out of curiosity, when it comes to dollars, what's the big, what would, do you have any idea what the dollar amount difference would be as far as Oak Ridge is concerned?
I don't and that might be a little hard to track, at least to get accurate numbers because as people will probably remember, you know, we, we had two dispensaries at one time and we went down to zero. And we back up to one at the planning meeting last night or two nights ago, I can't remember. I haven't been sleeping much. A, a second dispensary was approved, so we'll, we'll be getting a second one. So I think it would be somewhat hard to get accurate numbers because throughout the year we've, we've had, we've had zero.
Okay.
One, two.
Okay, thanks.
Next one I picked was on page nine, transportation safety enhancement. So this, this one is, you know, a lot of people have asked So this, this one is, you know, a lot of people have asked, why can't we have speed cameras? Um, and we have not been able to do that. However, the legislature has started allowing. Some of those speed cameras in certain areas, uh, basically in high crash corridor areas. And I, I, the idea is that this would allow us to expand that. And put them in different places, you know, some states allow you to have them anywhere. With notification, you know, sign on the road that, that the photo radars are in the area. Um, I I don't know how far the legislature will be willing to go, but I think. Working towards having more speed cameras would address some of the. Issues that that we've had a lot of complaints about, namely speeding. It was just on highway two eighty-five for a while, but now I've been getting complaints for a lot of our streets and. That would allow us to. Issue tickets in in areas that we, we obviously don't have patrol officers everywhere.
Counselor Kenyon, did you have something?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to note that on the marijuana tax you were inquiring about mayor was. I'm looking at our budget and historically. Our local tax would have been about twenty-three to thirty-five thousand in the most recent. You know, active years where we didn't have dispensaries missing. And our state revenue from marijuana tax has been about the same, well, twenty-three to thirty-five, so. Or maybe I said that backwards, twenty-three to thirty-five in local and seventeen to thirty in state has been our share.
Thank you. Counselor Whitney?
I'm just, I have my hand raised for when we get to our recommendations.
Okay. Okay, do you want to keep going, James?
Sure, I'm just about done. Uh, the next one. Uh, is on page ten, and this is the one in regards to, uh, increasing funding for. Uh, disposing of abandoned RVs. Right now, it costs the city up to four thousand dollars per RV to get, to get rid of these things. Especially the older, raffier ones, because there's a lot of hazardous materials, et cetera. Sometimes human caused hazardous materials, they're, they're just, they're a mess and. It it's cost prohibitive to to remove, uh, a lot of these abandoned RVs, so. Increased funding would be great, uh, in the Forest Service. They usually go through their budget, uh, within the first month of their yearly allotment of funds for the Forest Service and. Yeah, it's even, it's even worse for for cities. So that's that one, and then the last one is on page eleven. Um, and that is for the infrastructure financing and resilience. League of Oregon cities would advocate for an increase in state's investment in key infrastructure funding sources, including but not limited to. Special Public Works Funds. Redevelopment Funds. Those, those kind of, those kind of infrastructure funds that that we are facing issues with. At at the water treatment center, et cetera, some, some of our infrastructure is just. Older and will need to be upgraded fairly soon, and it would be nice to see. Increased funding for that. There are obviously grants that we applied for and continue to apply for, but. Be nice to have them focused on. That as well, so those, again, those are my seven choices, and we need to pick five. Uh, the deadline is August fifth. So we have a city council meeting on the fourth, so there would be time for us to have and discuss. This again and make that final decision on the fourth if we wanted to, to wait, but it, that's totally up to council how, how we want to do this.
Counselor Whitney?
Yeah, I'm, I really like the choices that James came up with, I think they're very appropriate. Um, my pick of five would be definitely the infrastructure financing and resilience, I think that. Super important, you know, not just for our city, but other cities as well. I'm in the funding for the abandoned vehicles. I know that's a huge cost for us, we see a lot of them here. Sorry, I'm going through it so I can make sure I read them correctly. On through my phone here, and the marijuana tax one, I think would be good, you know, um. Those tax, but tax dollars can certainly help with. Any public safety stuff that may come from. And then, sorry. Um, of course, the community resiliency and wildfire planning, so those were the ones that. And the funding for homelessness, those are the ones that were most important to me and that, um, I have the biggest interest in.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Does anyone else have some thoughts they want to share? Um, well, I will share, I agree with Counselor Whitney, um. I would have to say one that really rises to the top for me is the. The transportation safety enhancement, um, that's been discussed since before I was a counselor is our need for. To reduce the speeds on the highway. We've brought this up so many times, and. I think we know that it's going to be a long time before we ever have, you know, six to eight full-time officers. So the way I look at this is this is something that could really directly help us in our law enforcement on, um. Safety and reducing those speeds on our highway. Other than that, I I really do agree with, um, what Counselor Whitney said. Counselor Kenyon?
I would say I'm in agreement with the land use. Um, the wildfire planning. The transportation and safety, I agree, is totally, uh, something that our community has been hounding us about for years. And that's very important, same with abandoned vehicles. And infrastructure.
Those were my choices as well. All right, so how do you guys want to go about doing this? Would you like James to send out an email and have us? Pick from his seven and essentially, well, we couldn't do that, we need to do it in public. Do we want to just go through them one by one and vote on which ones are most important to us?
That's what I was going to suggest, if we could do that. If everyone feels they had enough time to look at it.
Okay, so how about I just bring up them one by one and let me know if it's one of your top five, and if it is, I'll put a, your. Name next to it. So the first one is the full funding and alignment for state land use initiatives.
Counselor Kenyon?
Did you have something? Or are you just, that one's one of yours?
Yeah, that's one of mine.
Okay, and. Audie? And how about, um, Counselor Whitney, was that one of yours?
Yes.
And Counselor Coker, Bjornson, and Hooker?
Yes, mine too, mayor.
Yes, for me too, mayor.
Okay, so that one is everybody but me, so that is probably a winner.
Yeah, just a.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, I think I, I count five votes.
Oh, was Hooker on there?
She was not.
Okay, so then I guess that would be five. Okay, thank you.
Counselors do remember you can. Only vote for five.
Yeah. Okay, so the next one is the homelessness, homelessness.
Yes, I'm for that one, mayor.
Okay, so Coker. And I am as well for that one. Who did I, did I hear Whitney and Sledoff?
Yes.
And.
Also votes for that one.
Dan? I think that's everyone, is that you, you two, Melissa? Not Dawn?
Not Dawn.
Okay, so everyone except for Dawn, so that would be a six. Uh, next one is community resiliency and wildfire planning. Dawn, yes or no?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Jan?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all seven on that one. I, I'm yes on that one as well. Next one is the marijuana taxes. Dawn?
Um, no.
Audie?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Bobby?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Jan? What was Jan's?
It was a no.
Okay, so that one has a two. And then, next one. Is the transportation, which was the. Um, what are they called, James? The traffic?
Us, the speed cameras.
Speed cameras, okay. Dawn?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, and a yes for me, so that one's seven. And the funding for recovery of abandoned recreational vehicles, Michelle?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me, so that's a seven. And the last one, infrastructure financing and resilience. Um, can you explain this one just one more time for me, James?
Sure enough, I'll just read the background out loud.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for League of Oregon cities, but, um, they're saying that a key issue that most cities are facing is how to fund infrastructure improvements. Both to maintain current facilities and build new ones, increasing state resources and programs that provide access. To lower rate loans and to grants will assist cities in investing in vital infrastructure. Survey of cities, two thousand sixteen identified a need of seven point six billion dollars over the next twenty years to cover. Water and wastewater infrastructure projects for the hundred and twenty cities who responded. This shows a significant reinvestment. In the Special Public Works Fund is is needed to help meet the needs of local government.
Okay. So would this include I and I, Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, Audie?
No, I've already done my five.
Okay, Bobby?
I say yes, but I think I may have. Confused this with the first one and have the swapped.
Okay, let me go back to the first one. The first one was alignment for state land use initiatives.
I prefer this one opposed to that one, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, so that one changes the first one down to a four. Okay, so we're going to say yes for you on the infrastructure. That's okay.
Yep, I did the same thing as Bobby, I prefer, I guess, on the infrastructure versus the first one.
Well, good, I'm glad we talked about that, I was confused too. Okay, so that drops the first one down to a three. So Melissa? Jan?
Uh, this was yes.
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. One, two, three, so that's a six. So on infrastructure, I have six votes. On the funding for abandoned vehicles, we have all seven, so that's a for sure. On the transportation, um, speedlights, that's a seven, so that would be a sure. And the marijuana tax is a two. The community resiliency with wildfire was a seven. The funding for homelessness was a six. And the full funding and alignment for state land use dropped down to a three. So I think we're going to take out the funding and alignment for state land use and initiatives. Because that's a three, and then the marijuana tax was a two. Does that sound good? So how do we want to maybe vote on that?
I don't, I don't know if we have to go ahead and vote again, but we could just direct our city administrator to submit a. A ballot for those that we've discussed.
That sounds good to me. Do I have a second?
Do we have to make a motion of that?
I like the way Dawn made that, I think that would be a perfect motion, we can direct the city administrator, and I think he followed along enough. Or he's going to know which ones.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Kenyon to direct our city administrator to submit our five votes. As discussed and seconded by Counselor Sledoff, any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Yes. Counselor.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney? Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, I'm glad that's done tonight instead of putting it off. Uh, next thing on the agenda is nine point two, the TRT request. I'll let James go ahead and read it. It's actually my request, so I'll let him read it and then I can discuss.
All right, agenda item nine point two is, uh, request to, uh, purchase signs. And there, uh, there's an estimate from Signs Now and also photo example in council package. So the issue is that many events take place in Oak Ridge, especially cycling events, often there is a substantial increase. In cyclists on city streets, having these signs could potentially prevent accidents and better inform. Motorists and citizens of events taking place in our area while appropriately equipping the city and our event planners. With required signage. Mayor Hollitt, I request council to consider funding this purchase through TRT funds. An estimate from Signs Now. And photo example are attached. So you will see that the. Full estimate is for. Ten signs, ten, ten reader boards that, you know, the sandwich boards. And there's an option to have the signs double sided, so they could be flipped around. You know, one side might say, you know, event ahead. The other side may say, you know. Bicycleist event with a image of a cyclist. Um, it's a little cheaper to do than one sided, obviously, but. You certainly save money. Long run if they are double siding for dual use. So that the most that has been suggested to be spent is for ten signs, now would be seventeen hundred twenty dollars. If we were to do ten double sided signs.
Thank you, James.
Accurate.
Yep, you got it right. So um, I'll just mention that um, I have noticed over the last few years, I'm sure everyone notices that we have lots of events. That happen and oftentimes we have a lot of people calling, asking um, all over Facebook, you know, what event is going on? And I really just these last couple months, we've had some bigger events and. I've noticed the cycling traffic, especially in the uptown area. You've seen it coming down West Oak Road where I live. And just all over, um, my thoughts was it just would really be a good safety measure for us to. Put in place to have signs up. It can warn motorists that are driving, you know, pay attention a little extra. We've got an increase in cyclists on the street and also. Oftentimes when we have events that occur on the highway, ODOT. Requires us to put um signs, you know, event ahead or things like that, so. My hopes were these signs could be multi-use. One side would have, you know, cycling event on one side and then you turn it around and the other side, it could just simply say event taking place ahead. The other advantage to these, getting these sandwich boards is. An event can actually customize them. If they would like, they can get their own plastic insert. For instance, Cycle Oregon, I know does a lot of that, so if they were to come in, they can get their own plast- it's a corrugated plastic. They could order their own signs. And they would just use our reader boards and they're really heavy duty sandwich reader boards. These aren't necessarily the ones that you would see. Out in front of, you know, a coffee shop. They're the ones that are. That are a lot more visible and, and bigger, usually on the side of a road for, for a large event, so. That's my hopes, um, and if event were to come in, they could simply get the signs from the city. It can also be something that RTMP actually requests that. Event um planners do, you know, if they get funds, this could be something that we ask them to put in place, just. Just to keep people safe on both ends. The last thing we want is a bicyclist um hit coming down West Oak Road. Any questions? Councillor Whitney? Councillor Whitney, you're muted.
There it goes. I just had a hard time getting this to unmute, so um. My question is, is, did anybody, did anybody go in and look at ordinance, I think it's, I don't know. It's twenty something, twenty-two or something like that for the signages to make sure that. You know, compliance for our ordinances regarding sandwich board signs. And making sure that this is really unfeasible. I think it's a fantastic idea. And I really like it, but I just wanna make sure we're. Really um following our ordinances and, and really looking at those before we authorize. You know, ten sandwich boards, and then if we do do this. Um, I think it would be great just to rent them out to events, you know, opposed to just letting them have them.
And that's absolutely another way of, and I didn't necessarily put them that in there, although I thought James did. Um, yeah, it actually, under staff recommendation, James added that about um certain of groups and events renting them. I wasn't aware that there was an ordinance um about not using sandwich boards. Can you elaborate a little?
Um, there's ordinances regarding signs and sandwich boards are just dispersed throughout. On the different areas and I can't tell you all the details, so my question about this was more of if it was looked at. And, and really um. A part of the research for this. This agenda item, so that, that's really what I was looking for, cuz that's what I. Would wanna see to make sure we're in compliance. Um, with our ordinance and, and what we're thinking and how we want to use these signs. And like I said, I think it's a fantastic idea. And I really, really like it. I just wanna make sure we've looked at that. And, and seeing how we can use these and, and making sure that it's a really cost effective way to spend that money.
Is Chief Martin happen to be on right now? Okay, James, would you happen to know an ordinance about using sandwich boards?
I'm not aware of any. There, there's, you know, some ordinances in regards to traffic control, it might be in there. But as councillor Whitney said, that they may be. Spread throughout in different sections. Such as for events.
I was just looking, I think it's article twenty-two. Part of our city codes. But it's like, it's, I remember when I was on planning commission several years ago, we were looking at this. And um, it was kind of. Spread throughout, you know, when we, and back then we were looking at ways to. Um, adjust our, our zoning rules, so it's a part of the city of Oak Ridge zoning codes and it's article twenty-two or section twenty-two. And it's, it's throughout it, it's not just like in one spot. So. Thought it, I just wanted, before we voted on this, I just wanted to make sure we really. Looked at that and made sure we're in compliance with what's. There.
Okay.
And I, I'm not trying to. Be a Debbie Downer on this at all, cuz I think it's a fantastic idea.
I'm willing to look into it, that's not a problem. Did you have anything else, councillor?
No, that was it.
Uh, councillor Spleedoff?
Yes, so, two questions, uh, one, is it a A-frame or just a single, single side up?
It's a frame, so you know, it, it's a sandwich board that looks like this and then on each side. It has a corrugated piece of plastic that slides in it. And the nice thing is you can to- turn the plastic the other way so that it's double sided.
So it, it is a A-frame, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, cuz I, it looks like it in the picture, but I wasn't sure. That's what I wanted to, and I agree with Bobby before. We do any voting on this. We should make sure in our. Rules on signings that it is one of. The okay things to do in here before we do any kind of voting on it. Thank you.
Councillor, thank you councillor. Go ahead councillor Kenyon.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out that I have seen a sign ordinance, um. I can't find it right now for some reason. I'm looking under business and under. A couple other things and can't find it, but um, I do agree with everyone that we should definitely look into that. Um, I'm gonna assume that there is, that it is okay to use reader boards because we have several businesses that are using them. So hopefully that is already an approved uh sign. To um have in Oak Ridge. But I had some other questions on this reader board. Uh, I see. One side of the A-frame, on the other side of the A-frame, does it hold a sign as well? So you could have, okay, so then it would make more sense that we would have double the amount of signs than we have boards. Would be one thing I would point out.
Yes, that's a, exactly, you're exactly right. That's my error. You're right.
Um, also having worked in the plastics and sign making field for some time in my life. Um, I know there can be a huge uh cost difference from company to company. Did you get more than one quote?
No. No, but I am happy to get multiple quotes, especially if we're gonna bring it back. And make sure that the ordinance is okay. I can definitely. Get a few different ones.
Yeah. My next question was gonna be um. On ordinance, but I, I'm thinking that even if there is something in an ordinance under. You know, sign, signage allowed in our city limits. I'm thinking we might also consider creating, creating. A specific ordinance for. What we're gonna require from events or, or, or change the. Language in our event application process so that it's clear. I remember when I did an event for the Forest Service, it was required to have signage. Throughout the forest for the event that was happening.
Yeah, I, that was part of my thought process was requiring our groups to use them.
Yeah, and then obviously if we're gonna have a fee, it needs to be established before we let any of these go out. And I also think we should be talking about what's gonna be written on them and have an agreement. And or require the events to. Provide their own.
My initial thoughts was cycling event. On one of them because we do have so many cycling events. And having the other side simply just be a generic event ahead. If we were to get more side by side events or other things like that, we can always buy. More of the corrugated plastic that comes in and we can also. Um, it's some of the bigger events that come here, we can. My thoughts was we could ask them to buy their own corrugated sign if they wanna be more specific.
Right, and I'm just thinking to be fair to all events that we shouldn't. Put up the cost for one type of event and not another, so I think that we should be looking at considering. Requiring all events to provide their own or none. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I just think a lot of, most events would have a difficult time buying their signs. That's why I was hoping just to have a generic one that said event ahead.
Right, and I, I agree with that as well, Mayor, but I think that. If we establish that we're going to do. One also for cycling event ahead, then we probably need to consider doing it for. You know, side by sides if they come along or anyone else that comes along. You know, parade event ahead, you know, I guess the, the generic event ahead is good enough for me for all events. And then they would, they would be required to provide their own if they wished it. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think the idea, my, my, my reasoning for wanting one side that had, that had cycling events. Is because in certain areas, if you have a cyclist coming, we don't have um bike lanes. And we don't um have. Really little to, to any warnings that we have cycling events going on and cycling events are moving. Events that are running through our city streets side by sides. For the most part are not running down our city streets unless they have a pre-approved area that they're traveling, so I was looking at that as kind of a motorist area. Colleen, did you have something?
Yeah, so my husband has worked for ODOT for twenty-two years, had mentioned that. If you are planning on putting any of these in like the ODOT right of ways. That that could be an issue, so to check with them for stuff like that, cuz. They take signs down if they're in the right ways, stuff like that, so just another place to look besides city ordinance.
Yeah, and actually the events that I've had on the highway. Um, for green, uh, at Green Waters, for instance, ODOT has actually requested us to put signs out. For the event, so that was a part of it too. They didn't specify a color, but that might be. Um, something I should check with them as well. Go ahead councillor Kenyon.
Well, that's not my hand, I think.
I'm sorry councillor Whitney.
Um, so I was going to say I concur with a lot of what you said, Mayor Hollitt, about the signage and. And how to use them, and I think. You know, what we would require or not require is a good conversation for later. It's definitely something worth having, but I, just to add. A couple things to this, when, when I was looking at uh. The, I think it's article twenty-two or whatever it's within our zoning. It was, the, these type of signs were mentioned throughout in different sections, so it like breaks it out like. You know, your city, your residential, your highway, your different areas of your zoning throughout your city and what signs are appropriate and not. So that's just, uh, just a comment on that, and then my.
We lost you. Councillor Whitney, we can't hear you.
We had the snowstorm.
There you are. Oh, we just got you back for a minute. Yeah, is anyone else hearing her at all?
No.
No. Okay. Oh, I think she may have. Bumped off.
I did, I'm sorry.
There you are. Go ahead.
About that, so having had, when we had our snowstorm, if we would have had these signs at that time. You know, I think they can have multi purposes besides just. Events, so like our wildfire events, anything else, they would serve as a good purpose for that as well.
Agreed, and that was my attempt. They would be, they would be a city owned thing that we could use for multiple things. Um, you know, for instance, the COVID clinic, we had a lot of high traffic coming into the fire department. Had we have had signs that said event ahead, obviously, we didn't have a. Accident, but we've had open houses in the fire department, lots of things at Green Waters. And events like that, so. Um, it's just an overall added safety. And it's pretty common for other cities to do. It's, I don't really think it's reinventing the wheel here. Go ahead councillor Kenyon.
Okay, I wanted to say that I found it on the city website. It's actually called ordinance eight seventy-four. And um.
Thank you.
This, the section is. Section twenty-two, like Bobby mentioned. On signs. And this is an ordinance that apply, or that is specific to zoning laws or zoning, you know, rules. So I think that if it was to be taken up. To change anything, it would have to go through planning commission. Just FYI.
So what, does it say that we can't use them or?
Oh, I haven't read it, it's. There's multiple, multiple mentions in the sections for um. Different type of sign requirements throughout the city for different reasons. I just wanted to point out that it is a zoning ordinance, which means. It would go through planning commission if there were any changes to be made.
Okay, so um, how about this? How about we table? Um, table this for tonight. James and I look into the ordinance that's already on the books. And see if this interferes with it, and if it does, um, obviously we'll bring that back. But also I can check with ODOT and see if there's a specific color that they prefer. And um. Also bring back a couple more price quotes from a different company to make sure we're getting a good deal. And would there be anything else?
Oh, I did one other thing.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I think um we would also need to add to our discussion in the future, like. Where would they be stored and who would be in charge of? And and would we have it? Or ma- maybe uh the city staff would come up with that, who's in charge of. Um checking them out and making sure they come back, et cetera, et cetera. So. You know, so we don't lose them.
Okay, so looking into the ordinance. Checking with ODOT, who's in charge of them? And then getting price quotes, multiple price quotes. Anything else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
If dawn's true.
I am.
Okay, uh I think those that ordinance, the back when I can remember the. Being on planning community, I think that was for. Signs like we put up for the park, Green Waters Park. Uh certain signs like that, not events signage. I don't think that was. I I can't recall that coming up as event signage, anything on that in any ordinance.
I think it's still a good idea, though, that we check that early just to make sure we're. We're doing everything above board. I'm I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Kenyon, did you have something to?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I do specifically remember when I was running to be a counselor. And looking at the ordinance for signs for, you know. Candidates to be on the ballot. Um, there was a size limitation, so. I don't remember what it is, but I I'm just um following up on what Counselor Spleedoff was mentioning. I I believe. Every type of sign is covered in our sign ordinance. There's multiple sections.
Thank you. Is everybody in consensus that um we can table this and bring it back?
Yes.
Thanks for all the good input, everyone. Uh, next thing on the agenda is nine point three. Ben Ward with the OLCC liquor license application for the bowling alley. Ben, are you still online? Ben, if you're online, you'll have to unmute yourself and talk.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, is he required to be because I.
I was. These. I know.
Without.
Okay, I talked to him earlier and he was going to be here. Uh, I talked to him probably thirty minutes ago, so. If we can move forward without him being here, I would much prefer to get this done. Um, James, do you wanna go ahead with reading it?
Yes, uh actually we have a question. Here, if that works.
Thank you, Ben.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, James. Go ahead and read the agenda item.
All right, so as most of you know, Ben Ward has reopened the bowling alley recently, uh Willamette Lanes, right? I think that's the right name.
Yeah, sir, yep.
Right, and uh he he is applying for a uh a license to sell alcohol on premises. And it's a pretty rigorous process that you have to go through the OLCC. The starting point is getting um a recommendation from the city. That is forwarded um to OLCC and it's simply. Recommend license be granted by the OLCC or denied, and again, it's not our decision. In the end, whether or not to grant Mr. Ward the license, that's OLCC's purview. Uh, they're simply asking for our input. At at this starting point.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to recommend to the OLCC that Ben Ward's liquor license. Be approved by the OLCC.
A motion made by Counselor Kenyon. I think I'm gonna give the second to Counselor Coker. She's just a little bit louder. Any discussion? Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, that's an older hand. I actually. Um, I don't really have any questions, but I will point out that I uh was reading through the. Uh, post on Facebook today and seeing that he is opening business for seven days a week is. Fantastic, and I wish him the best in. Um. You know, having that work for the community.
Wholeheartedly agree. My kids came down this weekend and took advantage of all Ben's little arcade games and stuff and had a blast. So I'm also excited all the progress he's making. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Hi.
Mayor.
I, I.
Counselor Bjarnson.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Thank you, motion carried. Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you.
Keep up the awesome work.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
All right, next item up is nine point four fee waiver for application for back to school Kids Jam. Go ahead, James.
Okay, item nine point four. Uh, the issue is uh Mayor Hollitt. The Oak Ridge Fire Department and the Oak Ridge Police Department have submitted a rental application for Green Waters Park Amphitheater. For August twenty sixth uh through the morning of twenty seventh to hold an event called Back to School Kids Jam. Activities will include uh movies and music on the stage. Uh for the evening of Friday, August twenty sixth, followed by an overnight campout on the lawn at the amphitheater. Until uh late morning of Saturday, August twenty seventh. Uh participants will be required uh to have at least one parent or guardian with them if they're staying overnight. And security will be provided uh by the police department. And a fee waiver has been requested. So technically it's two days, so that would be. Uh, cost of a thousand dollars if there is no fee waiver. Since it is technically two days, even though really it's just overnight. Event. And there's nobody booked um for that weekend, but obviously if we approve uh the fee waiver. Uh, the city may uh. Lose out on income from another group that may have wanted to rent this for that weekend. Again, no one has applied for this weekend. That's why it was chosen, but. That's the issue uh surrounding this event.
Thank you, James. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, uh, has anybody said anything about the water or whether it'll be turned off or not? For that night?
Well, I think I think it'd be much more exciting if we just turn the sprinklers on at midnight, but uh. Good point, I'll definitely make sure that the sprinklers are turned off. You might get them with the fire hose, though.
Okay, and uh where is this money coming from?
Well, that that's why a a fee waiver has been requested. Um, obviously council can can do a full fee waiver. Partial fee waiver if they deem that necessary or or deny the fee waiver. And then uh Mayor Hollitt and the Police Department Fire Department would have to uh decide if they wanted to. Move forward and pay that pay that fee anyway, so.
Okay, and the who's going to play for pay for the police and fire out there? They donating their time in our vehicles or what?
Yeah, so it's considered a a public relations activity, which are pretty common in both public, I'm. In the public sector, so both fire and police are pretty. Pretty frequently doing those types of things where they roll a police car. Um, I talked to Officer Val. She's gonna work on doing bike helmets for kids, so there are some activities that are public safety related, the bike helmets. Um, the fire department's working on some things too for kids, but really it's a fun night for the kids to just. Do some music on the stage and do a movie night in the park, so it'd probably be maybe one to two movies. And then we have just a couple partners that will come in and um maybe give free hot dogs or free cotton candy. And I'm working on talking to the church. They have a backpack giveaway and hoping that they might wanna come too, so. Yes, that is pretty typical for fire and police to do that.
For the fire and police both, right? Thank you.
Yes. Counselor Kenyon.
Um. First, I wanna point out that I I don't think that it would qualify for a. A transfer of funds from TRT uh to cover the. You know, the the cost of the amount that we would lose if someone else was gonna rent the park. Um, but even with that in mind, I'd like to move. To approve the full fee waiver for this event and um and just. The city would just take the. The potential loss.
I'll second that. Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Bjarnson. Is there any more discussion? Um, I just wanted to say one more thing, that this is kind of a city, well, not kind of, this is a city sponsored event. So any counselors that would like to participate and be there, I think it would just be really cool to have anybody there. It's just a fun night to do some fun things for the kids, movie night in park, and it's pretty typical. Other cities do it, so we're hoping to kick it off this year and see how it goes and possibly it could be an annual thing, so. Yeah, it'd be cool to see you guys there as well. Any more discussion? Counselor Spleedoff.
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer to uh run the sprinkler control. I'll volunteer my time.
Look at this idea you gave him, James. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I just wanted to ask, is the um is the event open for all age students or? Is there uh? Is it just the little kids or how is it working?
You know, we actually didn't discuss that. That's a good question, but my intentions were mostly grade school. I mean, if the high schoolers wanna stay. That would be awesome, but I really was thinking more of the younger kids that would like to sit back and watch a Disney movie in the park kinda thing. But I don't know, I liked Disney movies when I was in high school too, so maybe we'll get some high schoolers.
Yeah, and so do middle school kids.
Yeah.
Anyway, I hope it turns out awesome, and I'm also willing to help out in any way I can for that.
Well, that would be cool. We're hoping to do like free hot dogs and free cotton candy or something like that for kids. So there could be some help there needed. Any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Bjarnson.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Hi.
Mayor Hollitt.
I.
Motion passed. Thank you, guys. Uh, next thing on the agenda is nine point five. Um, I wanted to bring this up for discussion. We've talked um pretty substantially in the past about having artwork on the water tower. And we have an artist here in Oak Ridge that I met that is doing the murals on the side of the building. Um, that was formerly Bert's Fishing Stuff. And there's a snowboarder on one side and a bicyclist on the other. Um, I met with her and was talking about her artwork with her. And we got into conversation and she said that she actually already had some on her phone that she was looking about. That would be really nice logos that could be on the, I shouldn't say logo, I mean, they're kind of a logo, but um. Typical logos that you see on water towers throughout the country. And she was interested in painting that on the water tower for us, and so I said I would bring it to council. Um, I really liked her ideas, and if council is interested. I would love to get um some sketches from her to bring to council that you could actually look at. But I wanted to see if this group is interested and um before I actually had her sketch one up to bring to us. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, so. You know, um, this was our goal from the beginning for the water tower and all along was to eventually get. Something up there um in the form of more like a mural, and so I think this is a great opportunity that presented itself. Um, I do remember that when they um painted the water tower and put the Oak Ridge Work and Zoo. That there were, they had to rent some equipment um due to some safety issues. Um, with standing up around the water tower and now secure the walkway was up there and the ladder and all of that. So there may be some other costs to really look at, um but I think it's great to get. A quote and get an idea of what she would like to do and and really how much it would cost and then um. You know, maybe put it out for other people as well. So that we're really um including as many community members that may have an interest in painting that, but just. Have in the back of our minds that there may be some other things we have to purchase to make it safe for them to paint that.
Okay, I would agree to all that. Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah, um, I agree to all that too, and I'd um what I'd really love to see is a um. Some other questions answered, like the uh somebody actually pointed out to me a few days ago that some of the. Paint that's currently on there is flaking. I haven't, I haven't looked at it myself, but. I'd wanna know, like, does it require a a primer to be put on and? Um, you know, is or is it in good? Quality right now to paint on top of. Um. I also don't mind the idea of putting it out to other members of the community. In some kind of a um like a contest type way, we've we've actually um talked about that already once before. But um I'd like a full idea of the cost for the project, like. You know, from start to finish, including. I don't even know if you've asked, is the um person that you've already talked to. Uh, charge a fee and how much that would be. Et cetera, et cetera.
So I would just wanna. Yeah, and I expected all of the things um that were brought up. I didn't go too far with that just because I wanted to make sure that this group was. Open to considering maybe a logo instead of a big mural. And um I just didn't wanna waste her time by sketching something. And um, I just didn't wanna waste her time by sketching something before I, if, before making sure that everybody else wanted to continue to move forward. I definitely wanna move forward. But um, yeah, I think really important would be to find out what type of equipment we need to use. And of course, how much she would charge. Um, another, yeah, go ahead.
I guess I'd wanna see, I mean, I'm interested in seeing what you're talking about. For you say logo, but obviously it's
Yeah.
Not an actual logo, or we would be using the City of Oak Ridge logo.
Yeah. I can't remember what you call them, they're like kinda framework images. Like just for instance, you know how the Harley Davidson has like an, in their own style of kind of framework around it? And it says Harley Davidson through it, so something like that. I can't, there's, there's, they're like badges, there's a name for that type of. Yeah, there's different shapes and things that she showed me um, that are used all over different water towers. And of course, it would say something like Oak Ridge. Um, and you know, maybe have a cute little slogan word of, or something like that on it. But I just didn't wanna waste her time and go too far and have her submit something before um, we were ready. But I, I definitely agree with Counselor Whitney, that if we were gonna open it to her, we should open it to anybody. And um, so I wrote down on my list, open it to multiple artists, what type of equipment do we need to get? And then um, I, I will add, she said that the white paint was actually a really great color. Um, if she were to put an image on there, that she felt like the white was a really good backdrop for that. I do, I have noticed that the backside of the tower, um, I think it's the top part is not painted. And I've kind of wondered why that was, so um, I don't know if anyone else knows, Bobby, do you happen to know?
No, but I could probably ask, I think um, Rick was there. I can ask him, cuz I think he helped paint.
Rick, are you available to answer that, or if you know?
Sorry, I may have not pressed unmute in time, Rick, you wanna state that again?
The um, the lift would not reach the, because of the unevenness of the ground, the lift would not go over the top.
Okay.
You need to put a more experienced operator in the lift or get a larger lift, either way, that would potentially solve the issue.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and you know what, I, I remember when we discussed it before, um, that white paint, that was one of the reasons we agreed to that color cuz we knew it could potentially make a good backdrop for anything.
Yeah.
From a do, so we were looking ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I actually thought that it was primed prior to being painted, that was my bigger question.
Rick, James, can you ask Rick if it was primed first and then painted? I thought it was.
It was not, it was paint and primer in one.
Oh, okay, so a paint and primer mix.
Yes.
Counselors, Spleedoff?
Yes, uh, the only thing I'd like to see is, is it go further up on the tower where you can actually see it coming from the west to the east?
Yeah.
Because what's there is pretty low and you can't really see it until you ride on it and come from the east or the west either way, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably the biggest thing that I've heard, is that people really would like to see something when you're driving, yeah, so you can see it when you're driving up instead of having to go across the street to see what it says. Yeah, so that could be something we mentioned to whoever painted it, that we would like to change the orientation a little bit. If that's what the group would prefer. All right, um, I think that's enough information. I will um, maybe work with James on that and figure out um, yeah, what type of equipment and prices and those types of things. Is there any more suggestions or things people would like to see? Okay.
I don't have any.
Thank you, guys. Uh, my next thing I wanted to talk about was nine point six. And I had a conversation with uh, Alyssa Meyer with the Oak Ridge Chambers. And we talked about developing a map. And I, my hopes are to use TRT funds to develop a really good map of local businesses, hotels, um, really just all of the businesses in Oak Ridge. And something that would be, um, I've heard that there was an old one. I, if there, if it exists, it would be nice to maybe update it with updated businesses, so um, that it's, that it's up to date. Um, but getting a map together, I think will really help a lot of uh, different groups. And um, my next hope would be that once we develop a really nice map of Oak Ridge, that we can put together a travel book that is just Oak Ridge. And what I'm talking about is when you go to a hotel and on the night table, there's a book, for instance, in Portland. And it'll show uh, restaurants, things to do outdoors, hotels, all of those types of things. And that would be kind of part two of the process. But the first step would be really developing a good map, uh, making that available so that when people come into Oak Ridge, they can see what those businesses are. And so my hopes are that maybe one other counselor would be interested in working with me and Alyssa on the project. And um, yeah, there's a few more components of it. But I would like to use the book as an opportunity for businesses here in Oak Ridge to advertise themselves a little bit. Hotels would not have to pay into it because hotels already, that's where TRT funds come from. So it would be a free thing for hotels, but um, just, you know, throwing out a name out there, let's say. Oak Ridge Tire Center wanted to put something about, you know, their business in there. I can't imagine that they would for tourism, but I could imagine different biking events, maybe wanting a page in a really nice book that um, you know, showed their event, what they do, uh, what time of year it is, and some nice glossy pictures. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, well, for starters, I think this is a really excellent idea on both, both accounts. And I think that everything you've described so far would fall under what I know to be TRT worthy. I do know that the council has still not had time in our uh, busy schedule to actually create our rules for TRT. But I think, I think from what I've done research on, that this is definitely a qualifying um, you know, factor. And I think that we probably have quite a bit of funds in TRT, although I haven't actually looked recently at what our balance is, but that would be good to know. And um, if no one else is interested, I would be happy to help on this committee, but um, but I do have a lot on my plate, so if someone else is interested, I'll happily step back.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. I do wanna say that I have been trying to wrap my head around the difference between TRT and RTMP. And I think I'm getting closer to understanding it. But I have gone out and spoke to multiple hotels here, or motel hotels here um, and just really tried to figure out some things. I think that that money would benefit both the hotels, since they are the ones paying into it, but really benefit the overall business and tourism here. And I think it's something we need, Counselor Whitney?
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea also, um, you know, I know books can get expensive, but another alternative would just be, um, just some little um, like trifolded flyers that the city can print themselves on a color printer. So that it, that way you can, you know, kind of leave it as a living document and update it as businesses and events come and go. Or make it more of a seasonal brochure to um, hand out and have out in the community. It might just be a little cheaper and something easier to maintain long term. Um, I feel really guilty throwing Rick out there, but mapping is his jam. It's what he does and what he loves and what he has a degree in. And I know he's already done several mapping things for Oak Ridge. So he might be a good resource for that information. And he has this fancy big plotter machine that prints them, so.
Well, thank you. I would love to work with Rick on a, on a nice map, that would be awesome, if he's interested. Um, Counselor, did you have anything else, Counselor Whitney?
No, that was it, just, um, I think it's a great idea, and then just kinda keeping the idea of brochures.
Um, yeah.
It might be a little cheaper in the long run and something that is easy to.
And the brochure might be something in the short term. But the, the book thing, you know, I should probably grab one next time at a hotel in case um, anybody doesn't know what I'm talking about, but they're usually hardbound books. And my thoughts was the hotels wouldn't have to pay, but other businesses could, you know, they could pay their portion, which, you know, might, just throwing a dollar name out there, it might be $500. And if you get enough businesses, enough cycle events, before you know it, you're, you've got yourself several thousand dollars where you can put together some really nice books.
Yeah.
That have our annual events, you know, tree planting could have their own page. Um, just so, I think a lot of opportunities. And I've actually had a lot of different event people in the, in Oak Ridge, just these last two months really reach out and say that we need to have something that encompasses everyone. And I, I hope that this could be a good start, but.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, you know, with your art council and.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Just, just the diversity within our community would be great to have.
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just wanted to point out that it's actually not the motels and hotels that are paying the room tax. Of course, they write the check and send it in, but they collect it from tourists. Tourists are the people that are paying the tax. And then they collect it and they send it into Lake County, and then it comes back to us based on, you know, our population and yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that.
Thank you, that's a good technical explanation. True. Any other counselor thoughts? Um, this wouldn't be a project that would happen overnight.
No.
Yeah. Okay, so that really was just for discussion and ideas. And hopefully, um, Bobby, thank you for pointing out, Rick, if you guys have any other ideas. I think this could be a really good thing that the city could use TRT funds for, that could really benefit everyone. So any more, uh, Counselor Whitney, did you, is that an old hand?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, that is all I had. And next up on the agenda is business from City Administrator, go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mayor. The last council meeting, I was asked to look into insurance coverage on the WAC. And I sent an email to everyone uh, from Bancorp. Uh, basically, and then also our, our certificate of insurance coverage, which was canceled about a year ago uh, in July, when there was inspection of the WAC. And they determined that the electrical issues and the roof issues made it such that um, the building could not be insured. However, uh, the parking lot is still insured, there's still general liability. I believe that, that, that was answering the questions counselors had, that, so there is some general liability for the, for the building and surrounding areas, just like any other public street, parking lot, et cetera. I'm glad I included this certificate of coverage in your package.
Thank you for that information.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Yeah, I did read in there that um, the panel in the gym is not up to par. There's some, so we're not renting any space out in that at all right now, right? Gym or anything, okay. That was one of my concerns because of the panel. That's, you get the older panels that were put in back when in one uh, the breakers become a, a fire hazard. When I moved in here, that's at my house, that's what I was looking against was one of the reasons I had to change the power in here is because the breakers were considered as a fire hazard. So.
Yeah, James and I met with the architect yesterday, and he definitely had some interesting things to say about the electrical panels. And I think they're high, oh, I know they're high on the concern list.
Yeah. That was just one of the things I happened to read in there, and I thought, oh yeah, that, that's a real thing that should be looked at is because some of those breakers were probably good back in the day, but a lot of people went in and did things, and they're considered as fire hazards now.
Thank you, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, okay, so I was, I'm kind of questioning the section, or I mean, excuse me, in the email that's attached. Um, the second line down, it says, "When Brian was the city manager, I found a policy to ensure the building for an additional 500,000. The intent was to pay for demolition and cleanup in the event of a fire or some other disaster." And then um, I couldn't really tell based on the policy below, did we, did we get that additional 500,000? Or is the building insured at all for? Um, for, you know, it, just demolition, et cetera, if necessary?
So my understanding is that the inspector said the building couldn't be insured, so the policy was canceled. It, a, a policy from a different company for $500,000 of coverage was found, but determined uh, that that was too cost prohibitive to pay to have that insurance on the building. And it was only at $500,000 because that would, that would only cover cleanup in the event of a fire or something like that. $500,000 obviously doesn't go very far, it's not gonna rebuild the, the building, et cetera, so.
Do we know how much that policy would have cost? I, I'm just wondering why it was determined that it was cost prohibitive?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that, to that question.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
Right now. Right now, if there was a fire, the building is just completely, just a loss. And we pay for everything to demolish and and rebuild if we wanted to. Okay.
Well, I think there's some, there's limited coverage on the building now, only for $50,000 plus $88,000 of city-owned property, but that's in our general uh, general liability policies, that's the way I'm understanding.
Um, yeah. In the lines of coverage below, I don't see any $50,000.
Yeah, so I think this, this was our initial policy that was terminated on July 1st of 2021.
Oh, okay, so we're not looking at our current policy?
Correct, this was the policy that they've lost coverage on.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, and there was another one that we lost a couple chunks. I think we had a different one through a different company. Um, when our last, when our interim CA was here, remember how he called us and let us know that there was a policy that was terminated by the company? And it was not CIS, it was somebody else, I believe. So I think there's a little more that has.
That's not what I remember. I remember Mr. Cronin telling us that there was no, that the secondary company that Mr. Kutchen wanted to ensure. that Mr. Kutchin wanted to ensure us came back with the answer of no, they would not do it. Never was.
Okay. For some reason I was thinking we had it and then they terminated it, but either way, we don't have it.
Yeah. Counselor Kenyon, did you, is that an old hand?
Yeah, I'll take it down.
Counselor Coker?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm remembering things correctly, from when, um, former CA Kutchin was, um, in office, he was aware that the insurance company had dropped us. Not only did he let, not let counsel know, he also let the theater continue. So James, do you have any insight on that? And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
I, I don't know the answer to that question. Uh, on paper, based on the policy on page two, it, it appears the termination date of the initial insurance on the building ended on July 1st of last year. I, I don't know anything about who knew what, when.
So, so if it terminated back then and per se, he was aware, the theater was allowed to continue in an uninsured building.
Unfortunately, I, I can't answer that question. I, I'm not sure.
Counselor Kenyon, am I remembering this correctly? Do you happen to remember any of this?
Um, I do remember that during, uh, the spring of this year, 2022, is when we had to uh, officially close and, and ask both tenants, both the, um, the box and the theater uh, to, to no longer have their business there. And it looks like, you know, dates on documents will tell us when the policy was terminated. So, um.
The policy says July 1st, 2021.
So you know, I remember, um, when I talked to Mr. Conan on the phone, him saying that the insurance ended on the 30th, 30th of the month, at the end of a month, and then we had to have them out right away. So I'm pretty sure we had coverage for the theater being in there. Um, and I think we did have some sort of coverage, just not as good as what we had with CIS and um, just just to throw something out there separate from this, I really, um, I don't feel good about, um, I almost feel like it's attacking our prior city administrator. I don't think it's productive to what we're doing. Um, I think it, you know, it's important that we know what insurance we have now or what we can do now. But I just don't feel like it's productive to go back and, and attack what somebody may have done or not done before.
Well, my whole point in saying that was that council was not made aware. So how could we do anything if we weren't aware? We didn't have insurance on the building.
I think we were aware. I think I remember being aware. Um, and I remember there being some mentioning of it.
I know I.
And I believe so.
I do not remember ever being told that the WAC was not insured. I think that would have definitely raised some eyebrows and, and immediate, you know, I do not remember that. And when Kevin told us that, I did ask him to go back and look and he could not find it anywhere that we were noticed. And I, you know, I didn't go through and watch every single council meeting, but I did look through minutes and I do not remember ever being told that our insurance ended or was ending.
Yeah, I, I remember discussions, some not in detail discussion, but some mentioning of it. Um, and I'm pretty sure it did have some sort of insurance up until the 30th of whatever month in this, this press spring that, uh, Mr. Corin told us we didn't have coverage. Um, you know, I, and, and again, I just don't want to, um, you know, get into feeling like we're attacking prior employees.
Counselor Kenyon?
I think it would be interesting to see what our current policy is, our current insurance policy and, uh, you know, what the dates on it are. Um, I, I don't know that there's, I think what Counselor Whitney is trying to say is that there's probably nothing we can do about it. But, um, it is important. It is important to know what our policy is and that we're, you know, that we have adequate coverage.
Correct. I agree.
There's no reason why we shouldn't be allowed that information.
Yeah, I agree with that 100%.
Which would include whether or not it was insured in March, obviously, if we go with annual contracts.
I, I just think, I think Michelle's, Counselor Coker's concern is this, you know, how do we better know on these types of things? Cause had something had happened to anyone there, um, I just can't imagine the, the liability there. I think that's where she's going with that concern. So.
Yeah. No, I, I totally understand that.
So moving forward, James, could you let us just maybe at the next meeting, give us an update of the, the current policy?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Is there any more questions on this? Counselor Kenyon?
Does that? Oh, sorry. I'll take that down.
All right. Did you, is that all you have for the WAC, James?
Um, I'm just a general update. I, I think people have, are, are aware that that it's being looked at now. And we should be getting a report soon-ish, uh, about the viability of the building and what it would cost, uh, to get fixed up. And it's, it's looking more promising than, than it initially was. Yes, there's the electrical issues and the roof issue. But the bones are good, uh, you know, according to the architect who's been involved with the building before in 1991, he was part of that project. So he knows the building and spent two full days there now over the last two weeks and getting to know it very well. And we still have the blueprints from 1952 when it was originally built and they built things to last back then. So hopefully we can get it back in shape, but we'll, we'll obviously look at those reports and it'll be a council decision on down the road.
Thank you. Counselor Kenyon?
Um, something just crossed my mind that I thought our council actually voted, um, maybe a year ago uh, to close the WAC and put it up for sale. Does anyone remember that? I think I'll look into that.
I think that was, um, part of our budget stuff that we had worked on with our, um,
Right.
Budget stuff, yeah.
So though.
I think it. Yeah, yeah. But I think it came, stemmed from um, the budget recommendation stuff, but I think you're right.
Right. I think I'm gonna, um, see if I can find that information and, and it sounds like we're, we're going to be getting, uh, that thing from the engineer soon, so that we can make a decision, um, and again, whether or not we need to reverse the decision or move forward with, um, trying to do a renovation of the WAC. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I have spoke with the engineer. He doesn't, um, he actually pretty much concurred with the architect that the building is in actually a lot better shape than what he had initially planned or expected, I should have said. What was that?
We, he was supposed to be bringing us
Yes.
Some kind of port that would show us all that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, and he still is.
That, does anyone know?
I talked to him a week and a half ago and it was not completed. He said it was almost completed. I can't remember what portion they were waiting to complete. It may have been the electrical, but I honestly can't remember.
So, uh, all I'm pointing out is that I think that when we bring this conversation back to the table for council to make any decisions, we should uh, find and verify if we've already voted a certain way. And if so, if we're considering doing something different, we need to properly, uh, you know, rescind whatever the decision was made in the past or
I think.
We have to have all the information to look at.
I agree, but I do think I remember Mr. Kutchin came to us and asked us to rescind our vote so that the food box could stay there. And he gave us a report and said that the building was costing less than what was anticipated in a earlier um, estimate. And so we actually basically voted to hold off on the closure of the WAC. And we allowed the WAC, we, we basically rescinded that action and we allowed the food box to stay and we were supposed to do another evaluation, but then we ended up getting the notice of no insurance.
Right, except, um, well, the way that I interpreted that was that we just postponed the closure of the WAC, but we didn't make any actual uh, decisions on whether we would not sell it or sell it once it is closed. I mean, that was the whole point of the original motion, the way I understood it was to, um, give the tenants a six-month notice and then put the WAC up for sale. So.
I think, I think that was right.
I think we should, uh, look into that before anything happens.
I think that information would be during the budget discussion. And then I believe it was later on after the budget was approved, we re-discussed that. I don't remember the sale of the WAC, but I do remember voting on closing it. So that could be something that you should look into.
Okay.
Is there any other comments on the WAC? All right, uh, 10.2 committee vacancies and recruitment.
So this is kind of a, a larger project. It, it started with, I was just trying to figure out which committees had members. I believe there are now four committees, commissions that don't have enough members on them to even have a forum. So we definitely need to be posting. I believe every single committee and commission has at least one opening. Uh, but I'm not 100% sure on all of that data. I sent a spreadsheet out, uh, to everyone. Because it, it, I used, uh, Counselor Kenyon's spreadsheet as well as the one that I found in city administrator files. And still don't have a clear picture as to which counselors are in charge of which committees, some question marks uh, next to some of them. So I need, I need to get that corrected. Um, need to find out how many openings are in each committee, then we can do a posting, postings for all of the committees. Uh, I think council needs to decide what they want to do in regards to, uh, the process for that. We, we have application forms that we've used in the past. I don't know if we need to do any corrections, changes on that. Uh, we also have an ordinance 890, which, which requires, uh, uh, background checks on all committee members. It's, it's kind of a background check light, if you will. It's, if we do it through our police department, which is free, but it will only give you, uh, their Oregon background check. If you want to do a deeper dive, a complete criminal history from other states, we would have to pay for those background checks through the Oregon State Police. And I've been, but if we farm, we haven't always followed this ordinance. But it's on the books. We're, we're supposed to do at least some degree of background checks unless you want to ordinance. It's a lot, a lot of kind of, a lot of issues to discuss, but we have all these committees, commissions that are not operating because there's no forum. Um, you'll also see under the ordinance, sorry, charter, I think. That committees, yeah, charter seven appointments. You know, they, they serve basically the pleasure of the mayor. So mayor kind of has, um, a lot of authority over most committees with some exception. But that's something else the council might want to look into is how we want appointments to be, to run. And then what process do we want to follow? And then I think it would be up to each committee to, to write their own posting so they can be advertising for the types of people, you know, types of skill sets they're looking for to fill the committees and commissions.
Thank you, James. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I, I like all those ideas. Um, I do want to point out that, um, yeah, the mayor appoints members to committees, you know, by signature uh, upon a council approval. So it's an actual, a whole council process. I do think, well, I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but, um, I think at the end or, uh, maybe the middle to, towards the end of 2019, maybe September, October-ish uh, resolutions were passed for almost all of our current committees. Like we, we rescinded old resolutions that created committees and, and voted in new ones. So each, um, each resolution will say how many people are on the committee, how long the term is, some, a, a lot of terms changed on committees. Um, so we probably need to be looking at the whole big picture. Uh, but maybe starting with looking at what our resolutions are. And, um, you know, following them or recommending changing them again. Which did go through the admin committee at that time, a few years ago.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Counselor Kenyon. And, and I'm not bringing, you know, any, any resolutions or anything to the table today. It's just, I think we need to get started on, on this sooner rather than later. Just, we're just,
Yeah.
we need more people.
Filling the committees is a
Yeah.
An excellent idea.
And one of the things James mentioned that I agree with is I do think that, um, each counselor, if you're on a committee, I think it's really important that you take, you know, most of the responsibility for that committee. So you put out a posting and say, hey, you know, I did this just a lot, this last week for a couple of my committees. One was ODAC because we've had no forum, actually we haven't met in over a year. I'm really hoping to bring that committee back together. So I put out a posting. Um, and then once that comes together, I think it's important that whoever the counselor is assigned to that committee, that you do your best to try to manage the meetings and make sure that, um, you're working on the meeting times and then letting James know, um, when your meeting is to make sure that they are. um, when your meeting is to make sure that they are posted according to public meeting laws. Also making sure that the meetings are recorded if James can't make it to the meeting and, um, making sure that those are recorded because those are considered minutes and they really fall under all of the same rules and laws that public meetings do. Um, it's always nice when the city administrator goes to our committee meetings, but we have so many that I just think that, um, and this isn't just for James, this is every city administrator I've seen here in the last few years that it's really difficult to go to all of them. So if you're a counselor on a committee, I just think it's really important that you help take some lead in the committees. Um, Counselor Kenyon, is your hand still raised?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to point out one other thing was that the, a lot of the resolutions, if not all of them, they used to be council-led committees. Um, they're not anymore. It's a chair and a vice chair that are selected by the committee. Uh, so while the counselor could be in charge of, um, you know, the postings and making sure recordings are being done on Zoom.
Yeah.
Uh, the chair would be leading the meetings.
Exactly, and the chair would also take care of the agenda and those types of things, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, Counselor Whitney?
Um, yeah, I know from my committee, we moved away from you, well, never mind, the chair does that, so never mind. I was, so, I was going to, um, say for the RTMP and TRT and resolution, that was one that we didn't get to when we did our revisions. That's one we still needed to look at.
Yeah.
Table, um, and then of course hosting or, you know, advocating and looking for people that would be interested. But with how many committees we have and how small our community is, it might be worthwhile of looking at ones that maybe we want to combine.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it, it just might be something worth looking at.
I've considered that too, but when I look at them, which ones would you combine? Audit committee is really its own thing and audit is kind of set in stone how it has to be. Um, I could almost see parks and community and public safety together.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Now, wasn't, wasn't the Charter Review Committee originally under the admin?
Yeah, it is.
So wasn't it technically part of the admin committee?
Yeah, it's a subcommittee of the admin committee.
Yeah.
So really, the, the Charter Review Committee actually does have more people than what's listed there. It's probably just a little difficult to put that in a spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, yeah, and Planning Commission is its own separate thing. I can't imagine combining library board with anything.
Unless like Planning Commission is full right now? Is that what I'm seeing?
No, there, there are two open spots on the Planning Commission.
I was gonna say, I saw some names kind of all over this that I don't think are accurate.
Yeah.
Sure, that's true.
They resigned or been replaced, but, um, uh, we can go through that.
Yeah.
I'll help with that. James, are you still doing this off of Dawn's Google Drive document?
I added the information from Dawn's Google Drive document into this document.
Okay.
As best I could, so combined them, but.
Yeah, and I really like that you have the dates. Um, to see, you know, of, of how, what dates it goes through, for probably when it's starting.
Updated too, um, but it's a start, it's a start.
So I think the biggest message here is that we need to each try to advertise a little bit more for committees, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, you can advertise, but then again, you, we have to decide what you want to do insofar as process. Whether or not you want to do the background checks as part of the application, or do you want to select people and then do the background check on them?
I think that part we've kind of already established in the past. Usually we have somebody. Well, I know that when I went to the website recently, the application and background check links are right next to each other. So my assumption was that everybody does a background check and it kind of happens simultaneously. We usually vote on them in council meeting.
True, un- under ordinance eight nine zero, it, it says that it's, it's kind of says it both ways, it says all applicants for employment, city license and appointed volunteers, so it sounds like they're they're already appointed, will be required to do, uh, have a background check and drivers' check.
Dawn, do you remember how we were doing that?
Well, actually, when we had a discussion about this, probably within the last year, about background checks, we were told, um, by our
Attorney.
Uh, attorney or administration that it wasn't required except for the library. And so we were, I know we were told by administration that we would only be doing background checks on staff and um, volunteers for the library.
Yeah, I remember that too, because the library has children in there.
So do I.
Well, that, that's required by law because people volunteering the library may be around children, et cetera, but there are other committee assignments that also may involve being around children and it, it is an ordinance, we, we have the ordinance to wires it.
Yeah, so we would either have to assess, um, well, and there's, there's a lot more volunteers for the city than just the committees and we have the whole, um, well, I don't know how much goats is doing for the city anymore, but at one time they were pretty active, uh, volunteering in the city and then we have the, um, all the guys that are doing all the work down at the, um, disc golf course that volunteer their time and, I mean, there's all kinds of volunteers.
Yeah, those, those kinds of volunteers would not require a background check under our ordinance, under our order. Because it's, it's only for applicants for employment, applicants for city licenses and for appointed volunteers. So appointed volunteers are the committee.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not, it's all volunteers. I mean, we could do that for all volunteers. It, that's something city council wanted to amend the ordinance to require.
I don't know, I imagine it's, well, as long as they're free, it does that, uh.
So, yeah, so the, the free ones would just be for their Oregon criminal record. It wouldn't be their complete criminal history. So if someone, for instance, moved from out of state a couple of years ago, we would only know about their criminal history for the last.
Okay, so I remember when I was reading through this in the packet, a big question that popped into my head was, what are we gonna do with the information if we find out someone has a criminal background?
So the way these background checks are done, you know, under the ordinance is the request is sent into the police department. They return with a yes, there is a criminal record, or no, there's a criminal record. That's all that, um, council would be allowed to to see, uh.
Okay. Good, s- so that's really hard because I have been in charge of reading criminal backgrounds and it could be something so silly that would be, it would be our loss to not accept somebody because it's coded the same way with someone else that is a big deal. So that's a hard one for me, you know what I mean?
And also literally, city counselors can be counselors with a criminal history by law.
Yeah.
So, it seems it seems unfair to judge one volunteer over differently than you would judge another. The only thing that restricts anyone to my knowledge is if they have had a felony in the last year. And that means you.
Yes, you, you'll see under section five, which is in the second page of the ordinance eight ninety, which is in your packets, saying, you know, applicant for employment, city license or appointment as a volunteer, um, who had a felony criminal record or a history of conviction of a misdemeanor involved, involving moral perpetuity or theft will be closely examined by the licensing official and selecting officials to determine if the applicant possesses the required degree of citizen and public trust and competence. So again, just, just because someone has a criminal history, it does not prohibit them from being a volunteer.
Okay, so what is a license? Who is the licensed, um, whatever you read in there that
But that's our police department, we could do that.
So the police department would be determining whether or not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. The, the police department would do that, so do the background check, the light and report back to city council, whoever the appointing authority is, uh, so the mayor, city council, depending on how that committee or commission is set up, who's doing the appoint.
Right, but what you just read said something about a um, licensed. Can you read that again, what you just read?
Sure, applicants for employment or city license or appointment as a volunteer who have a felony criminal history or a history of conviction of a misdemeanor involving moral perpetuity or theft will be closely examined by the licensing official and selecting, and, and selecting officials to determine. So it would be, yeah, the selecting officials would be whoever's making the selection onto the commission or committee.
So in other words, council.
Council.
But we won't really know truly, I mean, on the record, it's not like it gives us detail when we get a background check.
No, initially would not. So I, I think the idea of this ordinance is that you'd, you'd get a yes or no if there was a criminal record and then council would, I, I, you know, approach the applicant and say, apparently you have a criminal record, be, should we discuss what happened?
But would we have to make them do that in public session?
No, I don't think so. And there's, I don't see any requirement of that.
If we're making a decision on based on that, I think we would have to.
Yeah.
Well, when we, when we go with this, when we go with the choosing of a CA, we did it in a lot of stuff in, uh.
That's, that's an employee though, that's totally. I know what you're about to say, Audi, I, I agree.
Well, I think that it's late. I want to point out that we probably should have said at nine o'clock, do we want to continue? I think that we should maybe table this for a discussion on whether or not we think the ordinance should be changed or you know, ask, ask James to make a recommendation for the ordinance changing. Or decide if the council wants to work on changing the ordinance. Or not, and doing all the background checks. I mean, I, actually, right now, if the ordinance is written that way, if we have any new volunteers, we should do it. And I think we should probably also, for the record, run every, every name that we have. Uh, that's a current volunteer. Because it is an ordinance. And then talk about how we want to change moving forward. Or not.
I like the idea of allowing James to give us a recommendation at the next meeting and then possibly giving him some latitude to see what other cities are doing and why they're doing it. I'm sure the league might have some invoice too. I personally don't like having something super strict on here. It's hard enough for us to get committee members. I think if we tighten the belt um, too tight, it, it's just, it just makes our list even smaller.
Well, I would, I would recommend that, um, that we would ask our city administrator to put that on his plate for when it's convenient. I don't know what else is going on for the next upcoming meeting. But I do think that if we have that ordinance on the books, we need to follow it. And I guess the council could decide, uh, as a whole, whether or not we should run, have, ask our police, ask our city administrator to ask our police to run everyone's names. That's a current volunteer.
Are you okay to table this conversation, Counselor Kenyon? Or did you want to decide on that tonight?
Yeah, I'm okay to table the whole conversation.
Okay. James, do you feel okay with information to move forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for bringing this to us. I, we all appreciate it. Um, last thing on the agenda, did you have anything else, James, for city administrator?
I was just gonna mention that, you know, I went to, I attended the South Willamette Solutions Meeting on, uh, the nineteenth. And there were a lot of groups, uh, represented there. Some information and, uh, data from census is included in your packets. I, I found it very interesting and it's just kind of in there for, uh, information for councils, you can see who's working, um, in these groups. It explains what, what each group does, et cetera. So there's just some information that I, I think council would want to look at.
Thank you. Counselor Kenyon?
So I actually remember seeing, um, I don't know if James would have even gotten the email because it was it may have been right around the same time he was hired, but, um, I remember seeing an email from uh, the Southwest Solution or actually some kind of, uh, funding committee for the WAC, I think it was, and that I don't know who's in, what committee is on it, but it's, I know it's Sarah Altimus, it's kind of organizing it. And she was asking for, um, time on that. I mean, I think the meeting was only a couple of days away, so it wouldn't have gone on that agenda, but asking for time on a agenda to update the council on what they've got going on for funding. Um, I'd like to have that update, so I wonder if we could ask her to bring that to the next meeting.
I think, um, Sarah's on vacation for a couple of weeks, so it might have to wait for the following meeting, but I'm sure she'd be happy to do that or give a presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see that. Maybe we could even coordinate it with the engineer presenting us with, um, you know, the document.
Yeah, possibly. Okay, James, did you have anything else for city administrator?
No, that, that's it.
Okay, on to staff reports. Um, I know Scott has a staff report. Do you have any other staff there?
I I have written staff reports from Police and Public Works. They're pretty short, but maybe we'd let if Scott is still there, if he can go first, because I know I think he's on duty tonight, right?
Yes. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to keep this brief. I know it's late. Just our June call stats. We had ninety three calls. Two were fire related, eighty two medical calls and a few miscellaneous. Public assists in there. We had thirty one transports and thirty six billable calls. And we had three patients that were critical enough to be flown out by life flight. Uh, we're currently working on an EMS coordinator hiring process. Uh, we did receive two very qualified applications for that position. And we will be doing a testing process over the next week or so. Uh, we also received two new applications for part time staff, which. I don't know if council knows, but we've been very shorthanded with part timers for. Quite an extended time now and it creates a ton of overtime for the full time staff. And we don't have people to fill those positions. So hopefully we'll alleviate some of that overtime with these new folks. Uh, the GMP program has been going very well. We received a reconciliation report from the state. Uh, and we did receive a total of ninety thousand dollars in GMP funds this last fiscal year. Which is fifty thousand dollars more than what we anticipated it would be. And the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office has received, don't quote me on the amount, but I believe it was forty million. From the federal government for grants to help support fire departments in wildfire mitigation. And we actually, Eric, he did and I put in for a staffing grant. And we were awarded thirty five thousand to hire seasonal workers. They will be. On board for the summer months. We can use them all the way up till the end of October. So that'll just give us extra hands. At the fire department, if we have any type of fire breakout, we we will have additional help. Uh, we still, we have filled one spot, but are looking for one more. It's really difficult to find people right now. Um, they've also released a grant for wildfire engines and we'll be putting in for that grant also. Uh, they do have three types. Uh, one is wildfire engine, one is a brush vehicle. And the other one is a tender and we're gonna try to go for all three, utilizing the other agencies in our area. That's all I have. If anybody have any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want me to give Public Works a please?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Uh, Public Works, they distributed seventeen point nine million gallons of water, treated twenty four point six. Uh, they repaired, they had two water leaks in the past couple of weeks. Stop those. Three, if you include the sprinklers that have been broken at Green Waters Park. Uh, that was fixed late today, so it'll still be wet around the playground area, but when that is dried up, it'll be taken care of. Otherwise, they've been doing a ton of weeding. I think they're still short staffed by a couple of seasonal employees. If anybody knows anybody who wants to apply for those jobs, it's open. They installed drinking fountains at Green Waters and Salmon Creek Parks. Uh, repaired. Broken sewer line. Got some wood chips to Banner Park. Yeah, and I'll, I can. I think I emailed, if I didn't email this out, I will to all the counselors for more details, but those are kind of the major. Those are the highlights from from Public Works. As for police. As of yesterday, July twentieth, there were two hundred and seventy four calls for service. There are thirty thirty of those resulted in opening criminal cases. There were eight arrests, like physical custody arrests. And again, that's just through the first twenty days of June. Uh, hiring status. Two applicants are in the background phases, hoping that they will be. On the force. Early August. The background checks provided some. Problems. There's a couple of departments. Where they won't release the files, but the background investigator can go to those departments to read them. So that's just been a little more of a hassle than. Normal, but that is in progress. The Coburn officers are still filling in on some shifts when they can. Wide drive issues being addressed. It's been a bunch of, bunch of callouts recently. Crime has been on the rise and I'm sure people have noticed that. And that's why the chief is not here. He was called out last night a couple of times and we've got three hours of sleep, but. I think I've covered the highlights on there too. Any questions that I might be able to answer for Public Works, please? I'm done with those reports. Oh, there's one.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Well, actually, I just. I think what I'll do is email the question because it'll probably take more time than I want to give right now, but.
It is late. Yeah.
I'll I'll email out a question. Maybe we can discuss it the next council meeting.
Awesome. Counselor Spleedoff?
I can email it in.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um. James, did you have anything else left?
Uh, no, I just could have mentioned, when's our next meeting? August?
August fourth, I think.
Yes, you're right. Yeah, August fourth seventeen.
And I actually have a question about the next meeting. We tend to run into this where we run over nine P M. I am wondering how the council would feel about. And staff feel about maybe starting our meetings at six P M. I think many of us find it hard to go this late when we have to get up early in the morning. So I'd kind of like to take a poll. From staff and council to see if they would be interested at least trying it out, starting meetings at six.
I'm perfectly okay with that.
Yes.
I'm okay.
How about staff?
I don't know. We didn't hear the question. We were asleep.
Yeah.
We're in favor of that.
I'm all for it, please.
Awesome. Well, I think Counselor Whitney, are you still on here? Oh, it looks like she's not on here, so she probably went to bed early. All right, uh, public comment. Is there anyone there at City Hall?
No.
Counselor Whitney's calling me on the phone. She must have got knocked off. Yeah, she lost connection. Nobody at City Hall? Is there anyone in the Zoom that has public comment? Awesome. Okay, so next meeting, we're gonna start at six P M on August Thursday. Is it the fourth? August fourth. Okay, all right, uh, meeting adjourned at nine thirty nine P M. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.